What I found in the end was the main thing was that everybody, all the people involved on, I wouldn't say both sides, all the sides, they do love their city. They love their library. They want to keep it open. Personally, I am ambivalent. I have three kids. They sometimes go to the library, sometimes they don't. Whatever people decide, that should be their wish. But everybody is on the same page, I think. I was surprised to hear that some people are really caustic in their assessment of others and they're hurling insults at each other. I've been called a lot of different epithets that probably racist is the only one that I haven't had, probably because it didn't fit the occasion. But that was the main thing, was that everybody do, everybody loves their city. Watching the finance, the budget meeting this afternoon, I just couldn't comprehend that people sit around the table and they don't know, do we have the money or don't we have the money? To me, if I put my hand in my pocket, I either find money or I don't. There's no ambivalence about it. The fact that the council members, they're not all on the same page as to whether we have the money or we don't have the money, to me is a huge sign of something is wrong. Transparency, accountability, not understanding of how budgets work, numbers and numbers. I would expect that at least we know that if we have the money, we don't have the money. It does feel for somebody that hasn't been involved in either side, I'm not involved in any group at the moment, I haven't been, but it did seem as a resident that we were getting punished. We were threatened with the library closing or not closing, the streets won't plow and all the other things that everybody mentioned here. The Troy Days Parade being stopped. So it's not quite fair to say that the citizens, and I've seen, I heard a lot of things that weren't very nice addressed at the Troy residents or certain segments of the Troy residents, patronizing statements, but in my opinion, they don't have their place. My question is, okay, now we're going to have an August ballot. I mean, apart from who's going to pay for it, and I understand it's only two bucks per household. I'm just curious, how many ballots, how many votes are we going to have? Are we going to transform this into a quarterly cycle? Are we going to adopt the other country's example of leading a nation through or a city through referendum instead of making decisions? So I guess in conclusion, I am, personally, I am disappointed. The whole situation, not in you. I recognize and I acknowledge every single one of you because you're all volunteering your time and I know what that means and I respect all of you for that. I'm becoming interested, so I'm not quite sure how these things work, but if any of you would be so kind to guide me through the process, I would be happy to get involved because I don't think it's fair for people to stand up and criticize without putting forward alternatives or being willing to step up and help. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's begin from Sandra. And then we had somebody run out and sign up. So Susan, would you come up behind her, please? And that'll be our last speaker and then we'll take a break. Yes.
All right. My name is Sonia Simmons and I've been a Troy resident since I was eight years old. And this is the first time I'm coming to a council meeting as an adult and I have to say, it's a little bit different than the June meetings where you hand us little pendants and smile at us and encourage us to be active in our communities. But what surprises me is the amount of antagonism that has been going on in this room. I'm astonished. I've sat here for an hour and a half now and listened to barbed wire fly across. And council, you wouldn't be here if you didn't care about the present and future state of the city, but the prolonging of the situation isn't helping anyone. You, the taxpayers, the children and the thriving community that use the library, or as many have pointed out, the 60% of that apparently have never even seen the insides. So this is not a request to merely the council, but the citizens who are listening and approaching this bench. Take your politics elsewhere. Take your party lines and your snide commentary and the quiet comments in the back row that you can still hear in the front row and the childishly stubborn attitude of not compromising, take them somewhere else. But that's just me telling you to do something. But as someone who learned to read because of the Troy Public Library, let me ask you something. When the next generation of children and families come into Troy, what do you want them to remember you for as both citizens and representatives? Take two seconds, take a breath, look up from your laptops and your desks and your furiously written notes and take, and just imagine when your children or grandchildren come visit you and they ask you to go to the library to pick up a book to read with their favorite relative, will you be able to look them in the face and say honestly and unashamed that there is no Troy Public Library because you shut it down? Yeah, I thought not.
Susan, thank you. Susan Roderzinski. Susan?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a new face. This is the first time that I've ever even attended a meeting.
Welcome.
I didn't come planning to speak, but a phrase that somebody said earlier made me decide to, and that phrase was, "The people have spoken." And I don't think I've spoken. You have had an election, however, on the library millage, however, I don't think that really gave the Troy citizens an opportunity to speak because of the unfortunate competing proposals on that ballot. That was unfortunate. And I think it's unfortunate that we have to spend additional money to go back to our public and have them have the opportunity to actually speak. But I encourage you to do that. My parents moved here when I was young. I moved away and when, well, when I grew up, we purchased a home in a nearby community and sold that when we had to move away. When we came back, my husband said, "We're buying in Troy. We want to live in Troy. We want to raise our family in a community that had strong values, that had a strong economic base, that had all of the things that were offered in this community." And so we bought in Troy. I'm seeing so many of the services and so many of the things that are important to families, jeopardized by this downturn in the economy. I understand that the decisions that you face are difficult and that these times aren't the easy ones. But I ask you to make the tough decisions in the tough times and to give the people of Troy a chance to speak because I truly believe they've been denied that. Please move forward on the library issue, putting that before the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Council's back in session. Whoever is closest to the air conditioning captain, Shilling, whoever is closest to the air conditioning system there, can you turn it off? No? We have people up here that are shaking with cold. He didn't even hear me. You have people in the audience shaking with cold too? Thanks. Okay, we're back in session. Our next thing is response or reply to public comment, which we can or do not have to do. Mr. Zerlike?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to say that Mr. Lamorato was one of my direct reports.
I can't hear you. Is the mic turned up? Sorry.
How about now?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to say that Mr. Lamorato was one of my direct reports and there were some comments made and gestures made that I thought were uncalled for toward him. And he does an excellent job in the preparation of the budget document and I just wanted to thank him for that. And because someone doesn't like the message, doesn't mean you shoot the messenger.
Yes, that's correct. And also if they would look at the record of how many budget awards that we've received from the Government Finance Officers Association, who scrutinizes specifically the budget and the kinds of things that are there, they would know that those comments were totally uncalled for. Okay, anybody want to do anything else? You're ready to go on to the agenda. Okay. There's a request for closed session. There are two items. If we could have a resolution, council?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltarmini?
Resolve that the Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E pending litigation Troy v. Safeway Acquisition Company and as permitted by MCL 15.268C strategy for labor negotiations.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltarmini, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Madam Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltarmini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. I four is the interlocal agreement with the City of Sterling Heights and the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, ICE, for use of our gun range.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Be it hereby resolved that the Troy City Council approves the interlocal service agreement between the City of Troy and the City of Sterling Heights for the use of the city's gun range and be it further resolved that Troy City Council hereby authorizes the city clerk and mayor to execute the agreement, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting. And I will also move B, agreement for use of the gun range, U.S. Department of Homeland Security, ICE, resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves the interlocal service agreement between the City of Troy and the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, ICE, for the use of the city's gun range and be it further resolved that Troy City Council hereby authorizes the city clerk and mayor to execute the agreement, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve Resolution A and B as printed and read. Discussion?
I have question, comment, if I may.
Comment, yes. Madam Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Perhaps a question for staff. Chief or Mr. Manager to the chief. We have had this interlocal agreement with Sterling Heights in the past, have we not?
Yes, ma'am.
Have we had it with ICE as well or is this the first time for Homeland Security?
First time, ma'am.
Okay. And I'm bringing it up specifically because at MML, which I attend, the regional, on Friday, our president of MML currently lives in Alpena and made a note that they have had some interlocal agreements with a nearby township. And in light of the governor's budget and the legislators that we have in Lansing direction on that budget where funding is awarded by new interlocal agreements, the township chose to terminate all of their interlocal agreements, all of them. And at the following meeting, they met again and they started all those agreements new. And as we sit here having a history of interlocal agreements which have worked out quite well and receiving no credit for them, I'm wondering if we should not think about something like that. I hate to play that game, but I am alarmed that we have a legacy of finding ways to cooperate with others and consolidate services to create a cost efficiency and to benefit all. And we've done that. So I simply wanted to share that. I'm pleased that we should get credit for one of these two interlocal agreements, but truly, the original direction given by Mr. Nixon from the governor's office and so on was that we would be granted credit for having that and we haven't been. So I simply wanted to share that that is something that other communities are thinking about and if it comes down to the fact that we are cut funding, we're going to have to think of more creative ways than we currently have.
I think that's a very interesting proposal, Madam Protem Kerwin, because originally, yes, we were told that we were the first ones who are on the cutting edge of doing all these things. Then low and behold, they said, "Well, if you've already done it, you're not going to get credit for it. It's just going to be for new things." And I was just shocked and stunned at that because here we were setting the example and we've done so many things that they're suggesting that cities do and then they don't want to give us credit for that? That's just ludicrous. So I think we should approve this one, but we should think about.
Going forward, we need to think about that. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion, Ms.? Okay, Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilwoman Beltarmini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Madam Mayor Shilling?
Yes. Motion passes. I five is Troy City Code Chapter 93 amendments, there's a correction, so we need to rescind the previous council action and then do another resolve. So we need A and B. So we need A and B.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltarmini?
I will move to rescind my own motion. Resolve that the Troy City Council hereby rescinds City Council Resolution 2011-04-078, amendments to Troy City Code, Chapter 93, Fire Prevention, based upon 2009 International Fire Code and 2009 Michigan Building Code adopted by the Troy City Council at the regular council meeting on April 18, 2001, as follows. I four, amendments to the Troy City Code, Chapter 93, Fire Prevention, based upon 2009 International Fire Code and 2009 Michigan Building Code. Resolution, you know the number, moved by Beltarmini, seconded by McGinnis, resolve that the Troy City Council hereby adopts Chapter 93, Fire Prevention, of Code of Ordinances of the City of Troy as amended, as recommended by city management, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting. All seven, yes. Motion passed.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltarmini, seconded by Councilwoman Howellak, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltarmini?
Yes.
Motion passes. Could we have B, resolution, please?
Mayor.
Yes. Councilman Fleming?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby adopts Chapter 93, Fire Prevention, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Troy, as amended, as recommended by city management, City Council Action Report dated May 3, 2011, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
We're doing this item because we are to keep the current chapter and adopt the latest amendments, and that's why we have to go through this exercise for folks that are wondering why we're doing this back and forth. Councilwoman Beltarmini?
No, that was all. I thought it was important that we explain why we were rescinding a fire code.
Right. Okay. The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Howellak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltarmini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I six is the standard purchasing Resolution Eight, best value award, community center catering.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltarmini?
Resolve that the Troy City Council hereby awards a contract to provide catering services at the Troy Community Center for three years, with an option to renew for three additional years to encore catering of Troy, Michigan. The caterer with the highest score and rate of return, as a result of a best value process with the city of, which the Troy City Council determines to be in the best public interest at a return schedule of 15% of gross receipts, less Michigan sales tax, or $12,000 minimum guarantee per year, whichever is greater, expiring May 9, 2014. Be it further resolved that the award is contingent upon caterer's submission of properly executed proposal and contract documents, including insurance certificates, the ability to qualify as the holder of the city's liquor license, and all other specified requirements, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the agreement when in acceptable form.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltarmini, seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? Vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltarmini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Motion passes. I seven is to rescind the bid award and re-award the contract for aggregates, and we're doing this because Richmond Transport withdrew their bid for 6A slag due to a calculation error. That's why we're rebidding this one. Do we have a resolution?
Madam Mayor.
And we don't need to read all the resolutions. You can, but you don't have to. Councilwoman Kerwin?
We don't have too many. Whereas on April 18, 2011, contracts for one-year requirements of aggregate material with an option to renew for one additional year was awarded to various low bidders, and this was Resolution Number 2011-04-085-J4B. And whereas after the award of contract, Richer Transport Incorporated withdrew their bid for 6A slag due to a calculation error, now therefore be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby rescinds, with prejudice, the contract for one-year requirement of 6A slag with an option to renew for one additional year from Richmond Transport Incorporated, and hereby re-awards the contract to the next lowest bidder, BMW Landscape Supply of Clinton Township, Michigan, at $13.23 per ton, as contained on the bid tabulation opened March 22, 2011. Be it further resolved that all other items contained in Resolution 2011-04-085-J4B remain in full force and effect as originally stipulated.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Howellak, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltarmini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. I eight is to rescind the bid award and re-award the contract for custodial supplies, and we're doing this because Central Poly Corporation declined the consideration for award due to their choice not to meet insurance requirements. So could we have this resolution, Councilman Fleming?
Madam Mayor, I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve the resolution as printed in the agenda. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltarmini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have, next, J one is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they wish to have exempted?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman Beltarmini?
J two.
J two. Any others? I move that the City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of item J two, which shall be considered after the consent agenda items as printed.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltarmini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. J two, is it because the special city council meeting of May 5 is highlighted?
No, ma'am. There are two things. One, there are spacing errors in the eight minutes of the 18th meeting, and so before those go into final form, I would like to see the typographical spacing errors corrected in those, and to this resolution, add the special city council meeting of May 5, 2011. So with those changes, I would move the resolution.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltarmini, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Beltarmini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we go to council referrals, and since this is my item, I will bring it up. Actually, the wording on this agenda should read, and I correct it with this, "Resolve that Troy City Council hereby directs the city attorney to write ballot language for the City of Troy Public Library dedicated general operation millage proposal." And I'm going, and the wording is pretty close in here, but we need a few things that are done in it, and I'm going to suggest that the wording be similar to, "Shall the City of Troy levy new additional millage for up to .7 mils against all taxable property for a five-year time period, 2011 through 2016, for public library general operating purposes." .7 mils are equal to, I'm hesitating here, hoping Mr. Lamorato can pull this out of a hat, equal to blank dollars on each $1,000 of taxable value. If approved, additional millage levied would raise approximately blank dollars the first year it be levied, and the millage will be levied on the winter tax bill annually. And we'll need wording from the state law about the winter, about levying on the winter tax bill. Is it too soon to have the numbers of what .7 mils are equal to?
Approximately 2.9 million.
2.9 million, okay.
Less than each $1,000 of taxable value.
Pardon?
What?
Which would raise approximately how much on the first year?
2.9 million.
2.9, okay.
The first question was, what little seven cents? You don't need it. You don't need it.
Now, in, moved by the Chair, do we have a second to get discussion, and I want to clarify some things?
I'll support that to get it on the table.
Moved by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Slater. The reason is that we have not actually directed the city attorney to write the ballot language. We had language that was provided to us on a temporary basis to get it on to the table. The reason that I am suggesting the .7 mils for a five-year period is that I think that in hearing all the discussion of the council members and the public in general, that it is better to get something of this nature on the ballot, let the people decide and vote on it, than to try to go with one mil, even though my original intention was to go for one mil and have the library that we all have known and loved, that was the award-winning library. I think that sometimes we have to do compromises, which we're not 100% in favor of, but sometimes that is what we must do. Further discussion of the resolution as proposed directing the city attorney.
Mayor.
Councilman Howellak?
Just a simple request. Would you mind just reading that over one more time so I make sure I have everything down as you moved it?
Shall the City of Troy levy new additional millage of up to .7 mils against all taxable property for a five-year period of time, 2011 through 2016, for public library general operating purposes? .7 mils are equal to?
70 cents.
Pardon?
70 cents.
70 cents. Excuse me, I didn't have that in there. And of each $1,000 of taxable value, if approved, the additional millage levied would raise approximately 2.9 million the first year it is levied. The millage would be levied on the winter tax bill annually. That wording, an additional wording that we ask the city attorney to come, may change based upon when she runs it by the State Attorney General. Further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Slater?
.7 mils, would somebody like to explain why we came up with .7 mils? So it doesn't look like it was just picked out of the sky. I think I know the reason why, but...
Okay. .7 mils is a number that is between one mil, that would be the funding for the library as it was in 2009, 2010, and yet more than what we have now. Am I correct?
Yes. Well, also...
So it's an in-between. Again, it's a compromise position.
Understood, but I think more importantly, it is a five-year average with declining revenues, that if you multiply .7 in the second year, you're going to get less than you did in the first year, you're going to get a little less in the third year, a little less in the fourth year, a little less in the fifth year. So it is a number that will average out what we need. So...
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Beltarmini?
I have two comments about this, and neither of them is substantive, but I want to get the minutia down first. 2011 through 2016 is six years. Start there. You levy 11, levy 12, levy 13, levy 14, levy 15, you've got five years if you levy 16. If you are talking about levying on the 2012 tax bill, then you're at five years, but that's not what this says. This says 2011.
So we'd actually be levying on the winter tax bill, the winter tax bill comes out in December, which is December of 2011, correct?
Yes.
So it should say 2015, yes. I was thinking it was going on the 12 bill, but that would make it another year later. That won't work. Thank you.
And then I have a question for Mr. Lamorato, because I asked the city assessor, when I put my proposal out, what a mil was worth, and he gave me a figure of 4.48 million dollars. And if you multiply that, and that's, as I believe, next year's. And so that's, seven mils is 3.13. So I need to know where the 2.9 came from.
Mr. Lamorato?
Mayor and City Council, the 4.4 million is the total taxable value of the city. There are jurisdictions, the DDA, the brownfield, and the smart zone that reduce that amount. Our taxable value, net taxable value to the city is about 4.3 million dollars for next year.
So...
4.4 is our total. We use the net because these other taxing jurisdictions capture some of that value.
So .7 may not be enough. If you take what you would need for a 2.7 million dollar library over five years, and allow for the decline of 1.2 million dollars at the end of five years, in what a mil is worth, .7 may not be enough. It may need to be .72 to get that 2.7 for all five years, and I think ultimately that's what will be the compromise that comes from this council, whatever that is.
Feel free to amend the...
Well, I want to know real numbers, what that average would be, because I think that was the crux of your proposal, was to put out something for five years that would both give you a little extra to put back, and therefore you'd have enough for that 2.7 million dollars without inflation, and...
The other thing I need to ask about, do we have to have wording in this resolution mentioning August 2, or not? Mrs. Bartholomew?
In this particular resolution, no.
Because we're directing...
You're directing the drafting. At the time the ballot language is approved, you would need to call this...
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Well, I don't think this will come as a surprise, but I noticed all of, you know, I've been following all of the millages that... I've been following all of the millages that are passed around, and I really have been seeing it in terms of a decade, in terms of 10 years, not five years. So I'm disheartened to hear that, and I'll tell you why. I think that it's important to have long-term, sustainable funding, and the five-year sounds like, wow, that's a pretty good chunk, except when you look at how time doesn't really direct it in that way. I also had hoped to see us returning to the seven-day offering that we had. I think in speaking with residents, it was, and looking at the results of the data that we have received recently, that people simply would, when faced with this, will choose whether, gee, they want a library, or they don't, and that's what it will really come down to. And we saw in so many cases, when people had the opportunity to vote recently, that they were in fact voting for a library that they believed they wanted in their community. And this is what I have heard that people wanted, was the seven-week full-service, award-winning library that they had and cherished. We know full well that the funding is coming down from all quarters, and that will be going down over time, but it was my hope to see us put a question before the people for 10 years, and for millage above what I see on your recommendation. Madam Mayor.
It was my hope that we'd be able to have one mill for 10 years, but in hearing the council's comments, and hearing the word compromise brought up many times, that I felt it would be better to bring forward something of a lesser amount for a shorter time period, and get more than a majority of council to say that they would agree that the city attorney could draft that language and put it on the ballot, because I felt that that would be better than having nothing at all. There is the possibility, if someone wants to amend the resolution, that can be done, but I wanted us to have something concrete, and to think, based on everything we've heard, based on everything we've looked at over the past two years. Could we live with this? The other thing that would happen is that there would be no resolution brought forward by the city council to be placed on a ballot. The library would close because there wouldn't be funding, there wouldn't be any bridging because there's nothing to bridge to. You have to have something to bridge to in order to get the bridge. And then we'd be back in the same thing, with the library closed, there wouldn't be Those are our choices, so that's the reason why I'm suggesting this. Councilwoman Slater?
I agree with that. I think it's a good compromise, and it's just time to move forward. Could I ask a question of the city attorney? If the language says the additional millage levied will raise approximately 2.9 million, is that attached to the millage rate, or is the millage rate attached to the amount?
I think.
Does that make any sense?
Are you asking if?
For the first year.
For the first year.
For the first year. It says approximately, and I think it's the millage rate that would control.
Okay. Because, Mayor, I'm.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm interested in having the correct revenue.
Well, in directing the city attorney, she will.
She'll make.
Find the right language, and remember how we've had language before, and she always bounces it off the state attorney general to make sure that it's correct, and especially the part about levying it against the winter tax bill. And that's an important piece to have in there, because we need the funds then, not the next June, which would be 2012.
Okay.
Councilwoman Belltrame, very rightly caught the other. Yes, Councilman Fleming?
Just a question for city manager, I just want to clarify. You're saying this is on the August ballot. If this were on the November ballot, could we still get this on the winter tax bill, which comes out in February? Is it critical it be on the August?
Mayor and City Council, I believe we still could get it on the December tax bill.
They're printed, they go out December 1st, so they're printed, and we have to get the information to them in, when in November?
Well, we are often waiting for school districts and so forth that have split millage, so we need to have it, this is the first week in November, so we'll have it by the, by the first, second week in November, so we'll be fine.
The reason that August was suggested was that people would know sooner, it would not be as costly to bridge in the funds from undesignated and reserved in the month of July. If we wait till November, it's six months out from now, so it's a greater expense. You asked about November.
Yes.
Yeah. Anybody else on the resolution?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Horlach?
So is it my understanding that the intent, just to reiterate, the intent is to have this on the August election, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes, but this, tonight, wouldn't place it on the August ballot, because we still have to get the wording from the city attorney, and that could come to us next week on the 16th, and we have the budget hearing, public hearing at the beginning, and this would be an agenda item that would be on there. Anybody else on this item?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Horlach?
You know, if your intent is to collect it in winter, you know, you're going to get the same amount of money at the same time anyway. There's no real urgency to do a special election, and so what you end up with is you end up spending money that we don't need to spend. If you're going to keep the library open, and if you're going to tax it in winter, then essentially you're going to spend the same thing, no matter, from a standpoint of library operations, no matter if it's on the August ballot or the November ballot. Therefore, it begs the question of why call the special election, and then you also risk a lower turnout, because people are out of town in August, and they're not expecting to vote in August, because we typically don't have an August in an odd year. So I would implore you to consider putting it on in November.
Councilwoman McGinnis, second next?
Well, I think the issue of the bridge that we would be, I think the issue of the bridge that we would be putting up in terms of funding would change, depending on whether or not we're going to put this on August, or whether or not we're going to put this on November. And I also think the issue of citizens getting notice is a little bit different than a typical issue that might be placed on the ballot. Obviously, this is something that we've had quite a bit of communication from the citizens about. I think that they are aware of the situation that we're facing, and that would influence the turnout in August. I think that this is a good example, in my opinion, and I'm just one person that's sitting up here, of a compromise. I would be interested in making sure that we do have the appropriate millage amount that's in there in order to reach our goal, which I think was to come up with the 2.7 average, so that we, 2.7 million average over five years, so that we could maintain the library that we currently have, which is a reduced level of service for a reduced number of years than was initially proposed. So I definitely think that this is something worth considering. I think it meets the definition of the compromise that we were looking for in terms of everything that we've been through on this issue over the last year and a half.
Further discussion? Oh, Mr. Lamorato?
Mayor and City Council, if this were to come forward at the next meeting, we would have time, and that, the actual final resolution would have the proper amounts in there for discussion at the next meeting. We'd have time to analyze it, since it was moved from five years, we'd know what period you were looking at.
Right.
We'll take a look at it between now and next week, and come up with the proper millage that would be necessary to carry roughly the same type of operation we have now.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Horlach?
As Councilwoman Belltrame noted in her communication to the city council in April, the incremental costs of keeping the library open versus closing it is not necessarily the total expenditure that is budgeted. You know, you have the revenue issue, then you also have other costs that are otherwise absorbed in the city's budget. So I think we need to pay heed to what those actual numbers are, and I think we actually need to do a little bit more than simply matching the expenditure at the library to the mill levy. And don't forget, the tail end of these years, we're expecting to show an increase in taxable value.
In residential, though, Councilwoman Horlach, I don't think so, in commercial and industrial. In fact, that's going to continue to go down. That was on that chart that you requested in your questions.
Right, and in fiscal 2015, and if your resolution still includes 2016.
No, I changed to 15.
Okay. Anyway, it would include an increase. Now, as far as the issue of the formation of de-tax, what exactly is the hesitancy to have a general operating fund, mill levy increase? And also, what is the hesitancy to reinserting the library into the budget?
Do you want me to answer, and then others can too?
Maybe.
Okay. Yes, the reason that it's being asked for is the city of Troy Public Library Dedicated General Operating Millage Proposal, is that it is dedicated for the library, which is some of the things that we were hearing from people, that they wanted to have library funding, and they wanted to have it separate. And in many of the communities that have passed millages for their libraries, they've done it with a dedicated millage, and it seems to be that people, when they see that it's dedicated to specific purpose, they are more apt to approve of that than if it just goes to general operating funds. Somebody down here signaled. Councilwoman McGinnis?
I just wanted to point out the issue of, even with the shortened time period, we've got five years here on the table as opposed to 10, and Councilwoman Horlach just brought up a point about if there's a change in whatever that property value might be, and the revenues that we would get from that, and the language does say up to. So I think that that would allow council to agree on an amount that was only going to be necessary for what it would take to run the library that they agreed on as a council. So I think that that takes care of that issue, in terms of not being able to predict with 100% certainty exactly what dollar amount would be brought into that. And I think the issue with dedicated, and I'll just reiterate what the mayor already said, was that that's, in my mind, the reason that I would consider supporting something like this. I can see the pros to both options, and if there was a different option on the table that could be supported by council that would say it was a general millage rather than dedicated, I would consider that, if all seven of us were going to support it, knowing that that money's most likely going to be used for the library at this point, based on what we know. But I think if that's not the case, what we've heard from the people that will ultimately vote on the issue, is that they would prefer to have it as a dedicated millage. And I think that that's really the change in what I'm saying here, and that's as a result of spending time in the community, and that being what we heard from just about anybody that even wanted to broach the issue with us. So I think that that's why it's here now, and ultimately, the voters will decide. That's what they, they told us that they wanted that opportunity to do that in 2008, and we're putting that question out there, I think, with a lot of hard work that we've all put in behind it to get to this point now. So I think that's why it's something we should consider.
Further discussion of the motion to direct the city attorney to write ballot language? Councilman Fleming?
I'm just still struggling with the August timeframe versus the November, and the cost of an August election, and the fact that it is a dedicated millage. I know we've got differences of opinion on that, but we should reconsider this and not put the August, put the November, and make it a general levy, not a dedicated, because times are going to change. We don't know what's going to happen the next five years with technology, and what's going to be required in the libraries could significantly change.
Further discussion of the motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Belltrame?
I struggle with August still, because we paid for a study, and the expert told us that we had the best opportunity for a strong turnout in November. A dedicated millage, I would be perfectly content with a general millage, and pass two, three-year budgets, one that would show what would happen if such a general millage passed with all funding going to the library, and one if a millage did not pass. I am not sure this council has the trust of the people to get that done. So for that reason, we may want to consider a dedicated millage. The thing at this point that is making me lean toward August, even with its cost, it's $700,000 less to carry the library, start there, if you want to leave it open. But more importantly, this issue has divided the community for a year and a half, and the sooner we get this done, one way or another, the quicker this community can heal and have a positive experience in the November elections, which will be fervently campaigned, I am sure. So that's what's making me lean toward August, even with the costs, and I don't believe, you know, I've said there was a million dollars in fund balance, so we can fund this election and the carrying cost of the library for a quarter, but I can't find enough to fund it beyond there. You can close it for the summer and then fund it as well, but I don't think that buys us any further trust. So I want the community to be done being divided, and I want a clean vote that just says, yes, we'll do this, or no, we won't, and then we all go back to living our lives.
Councilwoman Slater, you were signaling?
Well, that's exactly the thought process that I used to present my solution, and, you know, this really shouldn't be what this city council wants. We went out and we engaged the public, and I'm telling you, there wasn't anybody out there that was telling me to do a general millage. So that's why I put it in the proposal. That's what they want, okay? And I agree 100% with Councilwoman Belltrame. It will cost more to do it in November. So let's give it an up and down vote as quick as we can. It's cheaper, let's just do it. And then we got, we have a whole bunch of other stuff that we have to deal with. Let's get it over with.
Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Oh, Mayor.
This is on directing the city attorney to write the ballot language, this is not putting it on the ballot yet.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Horlach?
Yes, I'd still like to know if Councilman Slater could just clarify for me why you believe it would be more expensive to put this on the ballot in November.
Well, I'm supporting what Councilwoman Belltrame said, that $700,000 is cheaper than continuing it till November at 1.3 million, even if you add in the cost of the special election. So I believe it'll be cheaper. election. So I believe it'll be cheaper, and that's my thinking.
So if I understand you correctly, basically what you're saying is if the mill levy fails and we close the library, it'll be more expensive to have a November election. Is that correct?
No.
Because the, we have, you know, we're going to issue the tax at the same time, in the winter tax bill, whether it's November or in August. So the cost to fund a library between when you actually get that tax and the beginning of the fiscal year is the same, no matter when you have the election. And so therefore, if you have a special election, you actually have to pay for that election, whereas if it were on the ballot in November, you don't have to pay for that special election, because it's already planned. It's already budgeted.
Madam.
Yes, Mayor Pratim Kerwin?
I know by our rules, we get to, rather than you're doing that all the time. So thank you, Madam Mayor. Every week we have a meeting, I have to agree with Councilmember Belltrame, every week we have a meeting, no matter what happens here, and a lot of good stuff has happened at this table. If people turn on the nightly news, or they pick up the paper the next day, it's just that Groundhog Day over and over and over again. We do need to come to a sense of finality here. Do our citizens want the opportunity to vote on this? Yes, they've said that they do. Let them have the opportunity. This is it. Library, no library, here we have it. I mean, it's just as simple as that. We have, there's an entertainment program that's on, and some of the characters who play on that hold up signs, and they determine fashion by it, but they determine, got to have it, make it stop. And that's really what we hear. Got to have it is got to have that library. Make it stop is that black eye, week after week after week. So for heaven's sakes, this is clearly more of a compromise than I have the stomach for, to be honest. However, I'm willing to do that. Let's get it on, let's get it before the voters, and let's resolve this issue.
Madam Mayor, call for the vote.
Mrs. Bartholomew, please give us the vote.
Mayor?
Councilman Horlack?
Again, I'd still like to, I still think we need to consider two things that would make this more of a compromise. And one is the general mill levy, and two is in November. So keep that in mind. This is not a final vote, but keep that in mind between now and that final vote.
Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Horlack?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Belltrame?
Yes.
Motion passes. It will return to us, Mrs. Lancaster, on the 16th, which is next week. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to council comments.
Madam Mayor, just to be clear.
Yes, Mayor Pratim Kerwin?
Point of order. Are you declining then to do B?
Yes, I'm declining to bring forth B. It was hard enough to get it, getting A. I don't know how we're going to get B.
Thank you.
Any council comments?
Mayor?
Councilman Horlack?
You know, with respect to the, where we go from here, I think that you had a viable pathway that was blazed last month by my colleague to my left, by inserting into your multi-year budget a minimum level of service library. And then, this next step you would take is to have a general fund operating question that would address the issue of enhanced library services and enhanced road maintenance. That would be a viable pathway, and I still think that we should consider it between now and next week.
Further council comments? If not, we're in recess. We have a closed session, just for council, closed session on those two items we voted on.